I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with visible It's been moved in second to approve it in all those of favor. Okay, alright, so visitors should address the board. This is a time for public comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take immediate action, but will refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report back to us. We appreciate you keeping your comments to three minutes per individual or five minutes if you're representing a group of people. Is there anyone that would like to talk to us? I just had to say this. Alright, so we're gonna turn over the new business, the colors and the materials for St. Helens High School. And there comes Ryan. So are you ready for us over there? We're ready for you.
Yes, okay, so I'm actually here as a witness, just to make sure that Elizabeth has some backup.
A witness. Creative policy every chairman. Thank you. Okay, so St. Helens High School, this is our final interior design. We have a few items to go over and just kind of go over the concept and where we summed it up. And just kind of the last round of thoughts on this. I think through everything, we had a really strong concept that connected to the culture and community of St. Helens. We wanted to connect to the site, the history and the community. And we connected to the river, the gateway to St. Helens, the heart of the community, the timber history. And then we wanted to reflect the strong endurance of the community through connecting to your guys' using, you know, the basalt rock quarries as your guys' connection with that. And through all of our iterations of going through this design process for St. Helens, we stuck with that strong concept. We may have had to simplify materials and modernize it, but we definitely kept on coming back to that concept to ensure that you guys were personally reflected in it in the interiors. I'm going through the plan. We have our building, which is building A, which is the river. So we have the cool blue concept. And moving through there, we have B, which is the heart of the community relating to the forest. And then over here, building C, because of your guys' classes, such as your art and art and restrooms and things like that, we've connected to the rock, the basalt of your guys' industry. If we look at this, we have resilient flooring throughout the classrooms, polished concrete throughout most of the corridors. We do have certain areas in building A where we're having resilient throughout corridors, tiling your guys' restrooms, and just as I go through the renderings.
We have a stronger.
Yeah, it's so light.
Just turn off that.
Yeah. You don't need to just see that, right? There we go, perfect. Okay, so entering into St. Helens, we stuck with, we had originally the concept of our logos and we have the concrete, the wainscoting, so and then we have our wood ceilings. And we have our blue accents out there. We have a nice modern light fixture for you guys to come through your main entry with. And that has been consistent throughout. We moved all of your guys' graphic panels to the front entry, which you can barely see right there, but that's where you guys have it now. Here, we have the logo, which you guys can pick up on your screen, and then we have another opportunity in the comments.
Graphic panels, so there wouldn't be any like other comments or?
No, we don't have other comments. We have, we just have the front entry now.
I mean, not the comments, I mean the media center.
No, we don't have that right now. So we moved them all over here. Let's see here. And so referring to the board, you guys can see the real materials, the wall mat is still blue. Coming into the admin area, which will have the carpets. This is your reception area. And this is the front reception desk, the countertops, your back, your accent wall, the wall covering. And these are all, and this is your wainscoting, the catboard throughout. And to make that more clear, we have your guys' reception area. So now, we reduced it, we simplified it. It's very modern. You still have the wood back and that curves onto the ceiling. And we've taken out all the pendants. We still have the solid surface transaction counter, plastic laminate front. They're more of the resin, which is, you know, it could be reduced. It still has that modern feel and so captures the concept that we originally had. This wall, this wall either has the wall covering just to add an extra accent to that, to that area. And then we have a blue accent paint coming in. So if you were to go back to this area, we have blue accent paint on this opposing wall. And then you have white that runs down this corridor. And so you'll have that accent when you're coming into the building. So you're still pulling that river concept through. Then your admin area has the, has the blue carpeting. And we have the resilient LPT that looks like wood. So in that, in those areas, we have case with that. The vinyl, the menno weeds and the gray. So that has that contrast in that pop. Going into the commons, we've done a lot of simplifying there. We've opened up a structure. We've taken out a lot of the, we've taken out all the baffles and anything in the, but we were able to repaint the beams so that you guys can get little accents in the ceiling. The wall that runs above this corridor here is accented with blue as well, and as well as the projection wall. And then you have white throughout, so it's nice and bright and bioprinted and still really connects to that that river concept in the commons area. Also, on this wall here, this would be a good opportunity to actually put your school logo there. We talked about it being wood. It can still be wood. It would painted or we can even do something like a simplified wall if we're talking about.
So if you decide to make a rather large wood CNC thing, if we pick up the sources.
And Elizabeth, just to double check, some of the people that are online, they're not able to see your laser pointer. So you may, when you're talking about the logo, when you're talking about the logo of the surgery.
Oh, yeah, about this wall right here. So this would be, there's a wall that kind of pops out and lines up with these columns right here. And so you can have the logo here. This is the surgery wall down here. And that has our projector on it right now. So this wall right here is actually the one.
I can't tell if it could be the way from the light. The darker blue that's down below. Does that cover the beams further down at the end or is it not anywhere? That looks like it's just all the light.
This blue?
No, down below, so you have the dark blue samples.
Oh, yeah. No, there's no, the dark blue is the bees.
Okay, that looks so much like it.
Yeah, the dark blue is the bees. It just, it looks a little different in the renderings. And so if you're walking, see if the actual.
Yeah, that's okay. I just saw the two. I guess I'd say dark blue anywhere.
And then in this area, number one, so there's a transition that happens right here where the warm wood wainscoting dries in here. And then because we enter into the commons, we go into this lighter wainscoting. And this kind of connects to more that cool tone. This is what is here. I have another option. This is one that we never got to review, but this is a little bit more close. And that would be your wainscoting up here. And then you still have that door, so that brings that warmth. And so this is still the hard stop that we see throughout. It's just a different color. And so this, this wainscoting would come around, all around here, and then dive into this corner here and stop. And then you would end up, and then your wood wainscoting from the entry wraps around here. And this also has the accent that runs down that corridor. Yes, sorry, go back. Did our staff pick that blue color?
That's color of my house, Rosie.
I know it's the color of your house. Either darker blue or a gray or something else.
I'm right there with you.
Yeah, I'm right here. The actual blue's here. So the renderings can be stark and it's, well, paint is one of those things that we, I had added options. So they're definitely, if it's too much, we can also go through what would you rather see? I think the thing is, is that you have so many cool tones in here. If you were to go with a gray, you're gonna really make it you know what I mean? It's, you're gonna, it's just gonna be very monochrome. So I think a nice accent, you could even take this wall and make it white and just keep this one here as that runs down. And if you guys want to.
The blue that came out of that space is much, much darker.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gone because of the. The blue that came out of there was still, almost. It closed out.
I would almost ask like, some of the older staff members, maybe not staff with the young children, who, what colors they would put in there?
Well, I think the thing is, is that we weren't going because we were going with, sticking with the concept.
It's in a community part of the building, so like yellow would represent still nature, but also a lion color. It just feels really juvenile to me and was reminiscent of like a hospital. And to me, I think that kids will act age centric of what we're telling them they are. And it feels really juvenile to me.
And, and I wanted a similar idea. I wanted it to look, I guess, real adult mature, but to be that blue being going down, if it was the same color as the other beams, would make a difference all by itself. Just taking the one blue beam and maybe having that wall at the end be a color, but that being matches to me. The blue doesn't go with the gray and the dark.
Or a texture, like any of the textures are really pretty. Some sort of.
A texture where?
On the blue beam and then the back wall, just change it color wise.
It's actually, so this is the continuation of this wall that comes here. So this whole wall going up. So it's just not like a beam by itself. It's this whole wall.
Which I get, it just seems like it should be that color.
Okay.
Especially with the way what's going down along the way.
So, and then these are the columns in the space. So these columns actually go right in front of that. So what you guys are saying is you would make this white or some other color, or you only wanted one accent.
White would be pretty.
Yeah, I mean, would it be bad that it's the color of the other beams?
I think it could be the other beams. Oh, but it could also have a texture. There's the marble look to it or something.
I'm curious to what, right? I understand the theme you're going with the blue, with the river theme, and it's more of a calming color. Because that's where the majority of the kids are at and they're more, it's just what happens. So I see it as a calming color. I know we want to do everything black and but I understand. I kind of, I kind of like the color because I'm a blue fan.
Well, my concern is yellow or something like that, if we hold strong to our content from the beginning. So then when you start to introduce a vibrant yellow, when I'm thinking of this logo colors, then it's gonna be contrasting to this area. I think there's opportunities, you know, there's opportunities to do that, but I don't think this space would be the one that we want to do that.
I'm, I'm not thinking vibrant, but even the logo that's on the brick is a pretty muted yellow that's still yellow with the school color.
Okay.
Well, I'm hearing, hearing two things. I'm hearing we're not huge fans on, everybody's a huge fan of that particular shade of blue despair. Color is tricky. I'm also hearing that there's maybe more blue than we want and then with the duplicate colors. Can look to warm it up and make it kind of more themed with some of the district logos and bringing in the more colors. We can look to potentially reduce the amount of blue. And we can also come back with some other alternate colors of blue that are maybe a little bit, I would say, I don't want to disparage anything we're saying here, but a little bit more sophisticated to speak to your concerns about it being more like juvenile, right? There are some colors that I think are a little more, could be considered more modern, usually a little bit more muted.
Yeah.
So they're a little less bright.
So there's gonna be a whole color family that goes with that pair. My, my wife would just fall in love with it. In fact, that's the color I had to paint my house. So if I get a car, she's gonna make it be blue. So the kitchen floor is blue. It's, it's, I get this. But there are some blue grays that would maybe tone down that long beam a little bit. So it's not quite such an emphasis. I, unfortunately for St. Helens, yellow kind of went out in 1963. It's coming back, but mustard is really, we'll have enough of that in there. I, I just think that we have to be really, really careful about what school colors, although it is the common area for the community. It, it's not all gonna be just a school sports desert. I think that there's, I think you need to have things that can be decorated nicely. Many ways, a little a little of the gray tone. The thing about the grays is they tend to be neutral gray. I learned photography. I did a lot of stuff with my neutral gray for a reason. And every color would compare to that. So there are some things that you can do here and you can stay with the blue gray theme. If you go look at our river, it's not blue. It's actually downstream in the sewer treatment. You know, it's, so I look at that river regularly and it's more of a blue gray or a blue brown.
Yeah, blue brown.
But, but you know, after a storm, of course, it's brown. But the actual hue of that consistently is that from up high is a blue gray, not a blue. And so you might find, you don't want to roll a clearing of the basalt. But, but there are things you can do here that are.
You, you also run the risk. Nobody ever gets our school color correct. It's a, it's a lemon yellow officially. And we go from bright yellow, lemon yellow, mustard to strong.
Almost goldish sometimes.
The community complains about you're not getting it right. So trying to hit that target.
Yeah.
I think it's better in accessories.
I think, I, I agree with you. I think that also if we wanted to introduce yellow, the area for that would be the forest. Because you have the greens, the yellows and Walmart ones there. And so we can, as we go through the area, we can kind of talk about that. I do, we can definitely, I think the good idea, I like your idea about just doing the beams and maybe this accent wall right up here as one color. And we can take out this one and we can definitely find a one muted color. It's also good to look at the color up here versus the renderings, because rendering, the digital can kind of be false. You know what I mean? It makes sometimes look very, very different. So it's definitely come up and look at the actual sample. And if it's still too intense, then we can take it down to more like a gray.
We're not gonna turn lights.
Well, you're gonna eventually have to look at it onsite because you, you get, you can buy gray and it's everyone from green to blue to.
And we originally, when we put this in, we had a very light, a lighter muted blue. So this was actually pulling paint samples online and saying, okay, this is what we got. So.
My, my wife asked me, I just finished painting the entrance through all the halls, and she says, well, you can paint that wall? And I said, I did two coats. Because it looks quiet in there. I said, ah, tomorrow a lot of different color depends what the colors are. Right, it's so. But that is pretty baby blue.
Any comments, Jared?
Yeah.
Jared like.
Keep in mind that Elizabeth is professional and she's very good at her job. And so while I get that we want to kind of skew things, you know, keep in mind that the floor's gray. Some of the weights got, it's gonna pull that gray out of the weights, got, and it would reflect that. The tabletops will all be gray. Putting blue in there like she did all through there, in the two different tones will really bring color. And if you look at the middle school library, the middle school upper floor, they're blue. If, if you walk through there.
But they have wood, like there's a texture and an accent. And there's nothing there that says.
Where I care of looking at from this point of view, correct. If you step forty feet to the right, you'll see wood.
This is all wood here.
So I, I get it. I just think that once you see it all, you know, like a three sixty, could you guys do that? Just a three sixty?
We're like, we got the VR.
I would just bet money that you're gonna paint in five years.
We have to paint every ten years.
Oh, Jared.
Jared's not retiring before you.
And, and that is one thing is that since you have concrete and we went with a rare wainscoting there, if you start to get gray, it goes, you don't want, it gives them a little pop. We can definitely, if it's still baby blue, can still lighten it and maybe mute it, but I, I wouldn't. I'm hesitant to invite yellow in there completely. Maybe some more.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Kelly, your idea, when you talk about like the logo on the bottom right there that's made out of wood on the wall. That's another way to kind of bring in indirectly that warmer kind of color without yellow and blue in the same room.
And if we do it wood and then we have wood wainscoting all around here, and then your doors are all wood, and that's gonna kind of pull that bounce a little bit.
What wainscoting is, you can really be.
And it's, it's our song. And then.
You mean up on the beam though? I didn't see where you were.
Where were you coming up?
Yeah, that's what we're asking where you were talking.
Right here along this corridor, all the wainscoting here is wood. It's the, it's, it looks like our sock. I'll go back. It's this right here. It's all that.
Well, that goes with blue.
Can I give you, I think, a reason why I think maybe it stood out to me? I'm a blue, dark blue person, but I'm not a light blue anyway, okay? But this is gonna be a community room, which may need to be all kinds of colors, depending on what's being held in the room itself. And so I'll give you an example. And if you walk in the comments, I believe they have a test that we currently have. Follow all these decorations for classroom, right? And expecting, I mean, not thinking anything about it. It's just a kind of a plain colored room like these walls are, right? We get there and I understand the theory. It looks awesome. It painted everything, all railings bright red. That room looks so atrocious when we put our decorations on the tables, then I just had to not look at bars. I just had to not look at them. And I, and I loved them when there wasn't something in the room. Just like you could love the blue. But if there's a big event coming in here and they needed a color, doesn't have to be lemon and black. It could be anything. It's gotta be a color that can go with other colors for all the things that can be held in there. So that's what I'm looking at.
And I, and I understand that however, blue and yellow are. They, they do balance each other. As long as you don't borrow that red paint that's in the comments.
You don't want to do red.
So the door at the far end, if you have ideas of that comparison between wood and.
And now I really wish I would have cut that few instead.
Keep your back again.
Yes.
So if you can just visualize that, wainscoting all the way, that's the two doors, those doors that are the doors. That's into the hallway that runs the full length.
Are we having issues with that still in the middle school?
Yes.
With the same material, just a different install.
Completely different strategy.
I do have to give you a joke that I can't believe after building that building that you would even put the word basalt in of your life. I would just take that one right now.
It's a dangerous workaround.
It is.
I keep trying to mention it. I know. I say rock now?
No, it's just your own hazard. Free those to work on it.
Okay, so we can definitely revisit some color. So if that's something that you do with another perspective view or talk about in a free.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have, we have this in a model. I may get kind of joking, but we do actually have this model. We don't have it quite as fine tuned as this, but there is the ability to come in, walk around the model, put the VR glasses on and see where the colors are. To Elizabeth's point, you know, each projector and each monitor and each kind of vision of that will be slightly different. So having a good reference of the actual physical materials is gonna help, you know, in conjunction with that. That's something that we can definitely happen. We've brought that on a road show at times too. If we need to bring it out here, we can do that also.
Alright, so sorry. No, 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 the colors are good. I, you know, I'm presenting to you guys, this would be that health. So this is the science classrooms. And just so you guys know, this is part of Silver River Concept. And there's all these classrooms that run along this way. We need to go back to them, reference that. That's all these classrooms, the science classrooms. So you're coming around through the corridor and.
So can I ask a question on the science?
Yes.
One of your most popular experiments, a lot of the experiments, probably a green transition. And so any, you know, the trick was before when we were having the cardboard boxes, you know, and you try to see what we were doing or just throw out those experiments.
Right.
And, and so really muted color, the best color is pink, but it's not very exciting. But just make sure.
We actually have a very, I agree.
Well, your color is at the far side in the library and you're good and you're up against black. And I don't think it's gonna be, if your colors are like that, that's not the issue.
And so originally, we had a green here. So we did go with the aluminum. It's a more muted blue. And then we also, it doesn't look like it here because of the color in production, but it's of age too. And that was something that I was thinking about when I was picking accents, because I remember using that from the get go. And another question that came up was the sinks, because right now we're showing them as black, but do you want them white? Because you need to see, you know, what you're going down during all stuff and then for anything like that, black, okay.
They'll be black. They'll be every color but, but white.
Yeah.
Yeah, black and boxy would be just.
Okay. And that's what we, one of the questions is I put the red, I put the new more muted glue. It's not what we have in the quarter of Stephanie. But I wanted to hear your, what you would say about paint, because I was thinking about you. I was like, he's gonna say something about it.
I can tell you, the sinks looked okay and they, they were, they stained, but black doesn't broadcast the stain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we should, we decided to show the science classroom because the last few times we showed you guys the general classrooms and just showing, you know, in this space, we have, all your guys' classrooms have wood casework, because you guys have, and the science classrooms have have a concrete pouring, where all the other ones have the LPT.
Is there a coating that we can put on the concrete flooring to avoid stains?
Yeah, with the more robust super.
Yeah.
Then going into, I'll put it in the work pen real quick, just to reference. So now you're going down the corridor and you're entering in what we call the hard community building B and the media center. And so we just wanted to focus on your featured areas, which would be the media center, the library. And we had originally, we have the carpets that we've talked about. We have the accent carpet at top. We have the more utilitarian one below. We have wood casework. I have wood caps on your steps, ramp, and then where your. where your desk, we have a simple design with a Corian transaction counter, you have a little bit of resin up front, and then we've taken a lot of that design that was there, and just did a nice P Lam wrap. We have your wall covering that references, um, the forest, and then we took out all the accents, the whole space is white, and we just did one accent wall here. And so that complements the wall covering. And then you have all, uh, yeah, open structure, and, and.
So is floor at existing level?
Or.
Is that floors at the existing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then.
Perspective was a little hard to see.
So this is the other perspective coming from the other side, now this is tiling for the rendering. But I could not mix that. And so this kind of shows you your RCP that gets at your open structure, your skylights, how they're arranged. You got a lot of light coming through there, and you have your little, your, um, suspension ceiling here. Uh, we angled this a little bit because we were thinking about, um, students storing things up, and we didn't want things to get stuck up there, so angled that there.
Yeah, how many kids are in that?
So I so, uh, and so we have just one accent paint there. And I originally had a lighter one, but it was very intense, so I went with the mid one last minute.
And that's the existing door coming from building B.
This one? That's this one right here.
That double door in the back there.
Yeah, this one way back here, it's coming, this is building A over here.
Really tough to see or.
I cannot see it. I, I lose.
And she picks one of the map.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This door here is right here, and this is coming from building B. Right in here, and now you're in building B corridor. So we really simplified this space, uh, we just really opened everything up, and tried, tried to use what was existing. And then, to really take back, we had the career counseling, which I'm gonna go to the floor plan so that you guys can see. So if you go down this corridor here, you, you kept with kind of the same theme, opening the structure, similar materials, because we're still in the forest. And this is career and counseling here. So just reduced kind of the amount of finishes we had. Um, and since we had already looked at these carpets, I went ahead and used the same carpets. We have some LPT in there as a border, and then a light green accent here, and then above you guys have acoustic wall panels that are wrapped. And you guys have, you know, like, anodized framing, and the same wall covering that's in the media center you have here. And then we have the resin panel, we have one resin panel here, and the same solid surface that's in the media center you have here. So reception desk materials are very similar to the media center materials, and so kind of reusing what you guys have. Saves money when you're actually cutting things, you know, putting it together, but also just pouring that concept out. Those are similar. Moving on to the restrooms, um, I put this one in because we kind of had to talk about tile and everything, and then I wanted to just kind of show a rendering of what it would look like. And then also, we had an original concept of the gender, um, gender neutral restrooms, where there was a paint border that wrapped around heat and paint, but after us picking the new tile
here, extend.
Down there. These tiles, we came more at, at, at that. All the way down there are, are tiles, and so that border just seemed to compete a little bit with it. I do have this as a gray wall, it's not really showing up in this rendering. And so we have a darker tile here, and this rendering looks really, really dark, so I would definitely want you guys to look at your samples, which I know you guys got ahead of time. But I have larger samples so that you can see them, and then on the floor too. So we have the wall tile, the field tile.
So I see a change here that I thought we had resolved, but it may or may not be. At one point, we had an ADA bathroom at each end with opposite door swings, because people that have transition issues don't always have a strong left. In this bathroom, EDA, you need a strong left arm, and you can have your right side defeated, but if your left side is defeated, that bathroom wouldn't work for you very well. So there's just a question about that, where we, at one point, we had those at each end, at least in a couple places, it didn't have to be the whole school, but.
Yeah. We can look at that, so the, right now, you don't have two EDA restrooms, two full EDA restrooms at every location.
But if we have it somewhere, just so that somebody that's has a challenge that's opposite of that.
I'll, I'll go through it, I'll check, because I do remember that discussion. We have an opportunity with the ambulatory restroom, which is kind of like the ADA line where it has the grab bars, but it's not the full training radius. And we can reverse this thing on that more easily, that's the one that's next to it, right?
I, I'm, I'm, I don't see any complaint here, I just, it's just kind of a, a question, because there are. I deal with this on a daily basis.
And this is just an example of the gender neutral restrooms, there's various sheets of restrooms that you guys have, so, um, this is just pulling this to show this concept, so, I'm sure.
Is there, there's two different floor tiles?
There is two different floor tiles, there is a lighter one and a darker one here, this is what's in your deck is, um, only in the gender neutral. But all of the other ones have one floor tile. It was the gender neutral because the original concept we had was this wall, the door wall, was painted darker. So I kept it in there, we never had a discussion on it. So if you take this, you know, that's fine, but it was just, keeping with the original concept that we always had, which was the door wall was painted darker, which you can't see in this rendering very well. And then the field tile. And I, and the gender neutrals, we used to have it just a base there, and so the pavement of the wall, it kind of created like a, intrigued that, but.
You can tell our wall inside each individual restroom. And then the wet wall in the subway.
For what, this is, this is your wet wall in the, in the stalls.
I think, I think, are you asking the same wall?
Yes, yeah, the actual wall is in that, yeah, yeah. Your wet wall would be like your short balls.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, the, if this field tile is in your, your wet walls and all your stalls, and then the blue is your accent wall, and that's always along the wall. And that changes depending on what factor you are, right? So if you're in building B, you're gonna have more of your blue accents with that Silver River Concept, and then we had some gray that we were going to accent, and, uh.
Keep them under control down there.
Building B, building B.
So are all the bathrooms gender neutral always like this?
No, so I shook this one because this, we hadn't discussed the two floor tiles in a long time. Um, all of you guys have standard bathrooms, and then you guys have EDA bathrooms. And in your stand, in your EDA bathrooms, you have one field tile, I just apply paint that goes all the way around it, and one field tile. And then in your standard, you have the same thing. Um, you have the same thing, but you do have the accents, the accents on it. So you just say finishes throughout all of the restrooms just kind of apply.
Nice thing is that the kids are gonna come to the school training.
But they still have a lot of issues there, I think.
So.
Yeah.
So I do think it's worth coming up and seeing the actual finishes in person versus the renderings, because sometimes the renderings, we have to scale things up so you guys can see, and the colors aren't as true. Um, and like I said, paint is something that we haven't had in a while to have rendering of, so if there, these are actually the paints.
And so what I was thinking, if, if we got through the presentation, we could shut that down, bring the lights up, and then walk through the boards.
Yeah, that sounds great.
So it'll be a little bit redundant, but I think often times, Jared, he's kind of, well, that goes where, that, that goes.
And Leslie, how are renderings here too, so many years come up. So when you're coming into the floor, when you're coming into the entryway, you have your walk off mat, into the surface, um, walk off mat. And then it leads into your house's concrete. But your concrete's kind of a lighter color. And then you have your wings coating that's in your, um, vestal area, and it will have your graphics, because that's right, right in the vestal hill. But then when you walk through those doors, you will have your tat. This was something that we, I had here as, this is a cork tat door, it's colored. But I know previously you guys have had them wrapped, so if this is something with more wrap, but this was always what I had, and, you know, I just wanted to bring a light to it, since I'm getting into finding these all the other things. So this is your tat within the corridors, this is your wings coating, that's all the way down. Uh, this is your reception area, and so this is the hemlock wood that will wrap on the wall and the ceiling. This is your solid surface, it's darker to reference that stall than on the stall. Um, definitely polished, so it has a nice higher finish. Uh, and this is the front, and your reception desk, the top counter, and then we have a dark, darker color inside going where your feet are at, so that you don't have any scatting. Um, right now I have a, um, it's called an unfinished finish, a little bit more expensive, but it prevents all the scratching that we'll have to work on. That's what's in the documents now, you can go to that one. Um, and then in your, once you get into there, um, you know, your front office, this is your carpet that, um, that's there, and then your corridors have, um, LPT. And this is your Brazilian quarry, rubber quarry, that is in your health area. And we have that as a coat base, so that you can, you know, all dirt, you know, that in the sanitation, I know it's not like a high health area.
That's it, well achieved.
Yeah, yeah, and so then, then this one, then we have our case work in this area, because we have it with LPT. We have the case work not as wood. Then moving down the corridor, you get.
Sorry, this is working, yeah, the white countertop is in gray.
Yeah, it's, uh, gray basis. Uh, and this is a line weave, so it's got like streaks in it, that's the hovers, and then your countertop, it's not like when you get close to it, it's, but I have. And then as you go down to the comments, this is your wings coating, this is your concrete, and then these are the actual trees. So if, you know, take a look. And so that's actually your finish up here, because then you're also going to see these, this, in this color, wings.
And how this LPT is a sheet?
And how, it's a sheet, it's a sheet, whatever, it's a sheet. Yeah.
I kind of thought that that's the point I asked.
Yeah. So we originally went through like a wand for finishes, this was one of the areas, and you guys have originally your health term, and we had this, but I kept it throughout, and I have it all. Um, and so then, which we don't have mature, which we're not showing in our renderings, is we have our band inquire that is in, um, in building B, sector A, and we picked a, uh, this is a carpet, but it functions like an LPT. So it lays down and like, you pour stuff on top of it, and it just comes, it's big and popping like a bra. It is a tile, it's a tile, but it's a carpet, but it functions like an LPT. And so that's what we have in building B, those are really all the finishes, and we'll have probably, uh, some accents of blue in the, um, band area, but we also have a piece of panels in there, and your ceiling. And so that's pretty much all of building A.
The designs that are on the ceiling in the cafeteria, what is that, that's hanging, or is it just on?
What we have is we have the beams and the trusses, and then these little circle things, those are your racks.
Now, they look like there was like waves.
Structure.
That's structure.
So they're barred doors, so they have, you're seeing like the angles, I think maybe of the, of the.
Look at the ceiling on Walmart, you'll find it.
That are like the.
Yeah.
It's just trusses.
It'll be painted white.
Yep.
You can come up and look, yeah, you can come up and look, it's structure, but yeah, feel free to come up and look. Those are the, yeah, so before we had things in the ceiling, and now we're talking about all of it.
So that, the like band or accents is.
Maybe they'll have.
That's structure.
I was holding the light.
No, no, that's structure, that's. It's holding the roof, it's just, it's trusses, it's.
Why do those look weird in that?
It's a, it's a, the most developed.
They're durable and spit out.
Yeah, here, this, I, like, it's so much better than having a carpet, it'll have acoustic, but it's still had a little quality for this apartment, but we also have the turf in there, where you guys have a special, um, acoustic panels, so that it works with the soundless thing, so we, the reason why we picked that is I think it was one of your guys' originals, comments about spitting leaves on the ground, so that's why we wanted that carpet. I definitely didn't.
So, just, this is a loose thing. So we should order it.
So here, here's, here's two things, but you can, it has some like backs of clay, not as strong, but you can also use, uh, and that makes it even more, but stronger, so.
Well, I'm taking more easily.
You can go either way.
More easily removed, so.
I, I'll look past that for me.
You're not, I, I.
So that's just choir, right, and band gets LPT?
Yeah. Um. Oh my gosh, I gotta try and think, that is choir.
Choir, they're not spinning, no, no.
I have to look honestly, but I, I believe they both. Yeah, I believe they both have it, and I know that your guys' offices have.
No, you're right, you're right.
It's LPT, it's LPT.
All good.
It is LPT.
And as soon as, this could be where the director is, walking around, that's great. But then you switch to transition, LPT, what's the score?
You wanna transition this in the choir?
No.
Sorry.
No, then the band.
Oh, yeah.
In the band, you know, if you wanted some of that in front or who sticks, that's fine, the boots are. It's nothing.
I think I wanted it all, so what you got in the drawing.
Yeah, and we have all LPTs in. Yeah, thank you, and then we have all carpet in the other, and then in the offices, we have this carpet.
Her name is Corridors, is the wood LPT?
So that, that is a question that came to me, and it's those corridors that you guys were talking about, the faculty interface, right, and. So there's two things, I have right now the this is a product, but I have it entirely in a sheet. Um, and so what I sent you guys was that, because it's already in the project, I checked, it's not really a good price, right, and then it was the Roto. That is like, it's that would be more expensive, and but it has I actually specified for the quarter that.
That's some white is blue.
But I think that's, I would change that for insurance.
This is, it's bad.
And then I gave them the, the, the.
That's already some recall.
Um, we, we just, a lot. So, um, we should, I think, we gotta contact. And then we have two schools, two schools, I know the Portland public that used it, Franklin, only has like a little section, but they it's literally how we want it, by the top of concrete, and they were saying not to transition, should be the total. And if you look, so we guys in this room, so that one, and I think it's like seasons in elementary house, have. However, if you are still uncomfortable with it, the LPT by interface is a good option because of pattern in the LPT, LPT has that layer of compliment. So that layer of stress, it's, it's something that's. I'm still interested, I mean, this is really an LPT, your way, the interface has the crease for hacking, right, it's just. I know where, it's, I mean, it's. So if you wanna go that way, I would.
You got the dark ones in the lamp and any of them?
I got all.
Um, but that's. Tile, having the quality, so we'll take that down, you know, we need, and Nora is also, they like, for the lifetime of a product, they will trade them, they will come in and like, teach you how to use it, either you install it if you want them. So they will trade them, make it, they will come in and like teach you how to use it, either we install it if you want them. Um, there, there are customers. And the rep is, she's already said, if you want to walk down, go with her, she'll, she'll take you to the hole. And meet with whoever she knows. So, um, so she stands by her product. Either product is good, that's what I'm saying. And then. So should, should I address the, this is building B, and then, so this is your carpet. And this is, this is the one that's up by the, um, circulation desk. And then this is one that's down low by the bookshelf, so it's morning solitaire. Um, this is the resin panel, so I know on our renderings, it's like these. And that's just so it shows up, but this is the resin panel, and it would be often like two inch standoffs up front, so it's not like a big design. It adds a little something to your reception desk, but it's not, it's not too pricey. This is your coring top where your transaction counter only on the circulation desk, career counseling and media center. And then the rest is. And then your LBT is in your office in the media center. And then these are wall coverings that's in the back. And then these are over here in the media center, as well as your main one in career counseling, and these are big crease.
Yeah, this.
Panels wrapped. Right.
Just take that start.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know, this, this is fine. But this is kind of.
Too much.
Too much, too much.
Yeah, you can do that. Yeah, and see, other person who likes a lot of contrast, so.
Why you too?
Yeah, baby shower. Yeah, I think that's all of us. That's, that's, yeah, I can definitely adjust that. Um. If you guys want to see all this, we still have a bigger wall, I just put a new shower in, this would look like. Yeah.
This is where the locker is.
Yes, lockers are all coming out.
And then the one that was, that I wanted to show, that on the board you're showing here, this is the field tile. And right now in the documents, I have these as your two floor tiles. And that one I sent over there is your option for your floor tile, instead of having two tones.
So can you clarify, when you say field tile, is it floor tile or wall?
Well, wall tile.
Does this seem to actually, oh. This, this would hide scratches.
This would hide scratches, that's why I wanted. But it's, it's, I tried, if it's yellow or not, so, yeah, good. It's not, and then this is your, uh, solid surface counters that are for your sinks. So these are your tones together, and I just threw in a lighter option of that one if you guys wanted to go lighter.
What do you think, Jared, is this?
Uh, lighter's a little better. But that's just, you know, it's easy.
But just think, Jared, if, if this. Right on the surface makes it, you know, if there's some damage or something, you will hide it. Put some bundle on there.
I mean, it's a, it's a tile, I think it's pretty durable. This is what's in your documents, that's what I, like, ooh. Um, and those are your accents. And then again, so this is your LBT that's in your classrooms, that have musical backing and created into it. And it has, and then it has the texture, so that hides dust over time. It's, it's a really good product, and then you have your, um, wood L, your standard classrooms have wood case work. And then you have the lighter countertops in your standard classrooms, and you have the epoxy in your science. And then this one here is for like backup house areas. Um, I'm trying to think of one, I think I have it at the London Center or something, that's in there, because the, more you want to say there is LBT. So it's also this, this is kind of LBT in, in areas. Oh yeah, it's a creusel. Too bright, where? Is that right, too bright in the water?
No, no, it's.
So, and then, so the thing that I think you're not seeing on our, we'll check with the team, is I think we're using a creusel. Sort of the, the deck that's holding up the roof has a creusel copper, so very similar to what we do.
It's got the holes in it.
Has the holes in it, it's got insulation inside with as well.
Yeah, I'm just, just hearing that, that the cost of that may change.
Everything, it, it, it's fairly controlled chaos, as far as materials.
Yeah, that's, that was, same on the lot twice.
So that's in there, and do you think we did value engineer out some of those hanging creusel panels? Uh, but there's nothing to, yeah, add them back later, show the things throughout. They're not heavy enough, and we have the structure or anything like that, I think this just adds up to the existing. If we get in there and write this to those.
Talking to the guy who's doing the, the timber structures, including our kids today. And they, they're going to go into his shop, that he's doing, uh, woods, uh, timber structure for the airport. Oh, very dangerous.
That tiny project.
Yeah, well, he's, he's building those, that's what he's doing. And he says, I have a CNC that you close the door and shut off. And that was wanting to do things, our kids, their mix, maybe their materials for our kids. Man, we're trying to develop a relationship, it's been a blast, that's, gee, you know, if you wanted. What I was saying was, if you wanted a, a wooden CNC, it's kind of lying in the shop. He might just be happy to be there. Buy a different photo, so, you know, and, and he grew up out here. So he, Steve Farrell, and his wife grew up out here, so then. Uh, long as I think this is, so he's got a connection. And, and I, it's something, we can't cross, we're talking about wrapping too, so we decided, rather than hire some fancy shop. And then the other thing is, that composite, you know, which is found to be, and if you're interested in someone to pick up.
With, with that said, this is set of signage, um, what we have is, we have metal signage on the admin, the career counseling, and the media center. And then, think in the other areas, we just have vinyl signage. So we didn't go with anything really decorative or wood or anything like that, and it's being very simple, but I think it still had like a very.
So even our metal shop has, uh, input of.
And then just as a sign, I've never mentioned it in a long time. The culinary has the core resonance pouring, we have a silver boxy cabinets, and we have tile in there, and we have. Actually, but now the culinary is now buildings B, so we can probably change that. So, um. Well, it used to be in W A.
I know.
So now it's a building B, so I didn't throw an accent in there. Uh, so the things that you guys haven't seen are, were. The wainscoting, paint. I sent in advanced tile samples and the resilient flooring for corridors. And so if there's any, and then, I don't think you guys have seen the creusel panels, that would be wrapped, that would be up high in the career counseling. That's the tack board, that's in the wainscoting, so when you are, I want to say. No, it's like, the tack board's like here, you know what I mean? So your tack board is like standard height, and then it will go up to seventy, so it aligns with the tall wainscoting, the top of the roars of the wainscoting, yeah. And so if that's not wrapped, that's just a dyed, um, Lindsay oil, it's super sustainable. So, and so those, I just wanted to bring those little things that we had to talk about. And then we never talked about really what these stairs would be. And so I have an exposed concrete for a long time, and I don't think that's about enough, so I put the caps on them. Um, if there's, if you guys would like more of a rubber.
I don't, I don't.
Tread.
That's going to be just. Either, either concrete or, or the, just a plain old coat cap.
Okay, you're talking about the, the.
Rubber. What else would you with?
What would you?
What stair trap, this area, we're timing out.
Well, the other. And the reason why I looked at this area was because it's the media center, and, and so you don't have like running, because it's a library. I'm saying that word, but I wanted to just show that, because I think we've always done with this stand.
So that, they're concrete now.
Yeah, well, so it will be, yeah. Yeah, and so I wasn't sure if.
It's got a carpet surrounding it on all sides, and it's a short hall, so if you're west inclined or if you're so long, I'm going to wish there. The thinking was that the media center has a lot of wood access, and it's kind of a warmer, brighter space. But it is tighter, you're trying to get, if they're not made out of solid wood stairs, if you're kind of wearing it, you know, for a while.
The company looks. Yeah, well, if you guys are okay with concrete, they look really nice.
And you don't put the people out there on the stairs.
No, I would.
Yeah.
If that should anywhere, I would kind of, I would either say concrete or, or do that weather. I would want a band level, which is not in that space, I thought it was kind of, reduce, yeah, well, reduce the quality.
I, I actually need concrete.
Okay.
So man.
And then the other question I had too was that, that ramp, you have that ramp you leave somewhere. You leave it concrete too, and you want to be. Yeah, I want a pretty little pile. Right.
So I know you all have a lot to cover, and we're, we're, think, I was, um, can we go around just for quick? Do you have everything, you have answers for, for.
With the tile, are you guys okay with these two, or are you guys like that one?
And again, is this for restroom?
Restrooms.
Can we back up though, in general, and I'm wondering, like, how much, so when we did the first, um, bond cycle, a lot of the materials that we were presented, never actually came to be. Like it, the design, the lights didn't happen, lots of things were cut, we started saving money. So I feel like what was presented never happened.
That has happened in, in this project too, with, you know, to this.
Okay, so then I'm wondering about sourcing all of those materials, are we actually going to get them?
Well, why do you ask that? So, but, which Elizabeth said, she said sometimes this is in the documents, right? So the project is out to bid right now. And so we have said, these are the, we had to, you know, give them a direction on some of these, you know, ideas on. So generally speaking, when I'm asking Elizabeth, do you have direction on everything? The ones that she didn't have direction on, we did put something in there for them, that can change if we want to issue that tonight. But otherwise, everything that you're seeing tonight is what the contractor is bidding. Whether it's going to be available by the time we need to order it and actually install it, really can't control that. But this is, this is as late as you could possibly do within the process to get the most accurate information as far as what's in the project for the design, and what we're asking them to do.
I'd say right, it does look like change. So then it feels like we're bidding on so many things, and doing so many accents, and so many materials on backs, or like desks around. I'm wondering if we're spending a lot of money on.
So, so we, with this, this design, we, we started from impulse, not to fund, right? So we, we started with more finishes, and as every time we've had a reiterate, because of costs, we reduced, you know, it was reduced to reduce. So that is why, like, this, like, your career counseling, your media center, all same materials, because you're cutting costs by, you know, ordering more of them and using them. The reason why I'm using your solid surface transaction powder in two spaces is because when you get the huge sheet, why would you only want a paper sheet and only take this section when you can use it in various places, right? So those things are all taken into consideration, so it's. We have a resin panel, but you have the resin panel in two of your reception desks, you know what I mean? And then they come in certain lengths, so those things are taken into consideration, because we've already taken out a ton of finishes. Um, you're not going to paint me, you know, if it was satin, you're going to pay more for epoxy, you know what I mean? But you're not having, where we have is tile. And so one of the things that I've been talking a lot about is, okay, we have tile throughout. There are ways to cut costs by saying, like, for instance, if we were looking at this restroom here, we've done a neutral restrooms. This wall right here technically is not a wet wall, we don't have to have a tile. We can bring that down to a six inch base, and then we can just do standard paint there. So those are things, like, as the prices come in, there's.
Whereas I'd be.
Yeah, we've been thinking about how we're the design, but still get you where you guys want to go, you know what I mean? So the costs are there, but there's also like a strategy of what we can keep and fill the design, well, you know, the finishes. And the finishes, I tried to keep on to the, what we originally kind of, our first meetings, and every little thing that has changed, like we opened up the structure. So now we have columns and beams, and so we've done a lot of iterations and always looking at cost and what, how, you know, what's more and what's not. So I think it's going to happen, but.
So one other strategy to that, that Elizabeth has been really good about, is trying to create that visual interest, but still trying to be very strategic about it. So it may seem like a case work, it has a different countertop and a different, a base and a different upper laminate, but we're kind of using those same laminates throughout the project, just in somewhat different ways. So that we, we're still trying to create a consistent family of materials, not using too many, actually is a pretty big project too. So once you pull everything together, for the size of the project to have it pared down to this, because we do show like a lot of different finishes, but there are quite a few of these that we keep on this floor.
And that was one of the things that presenting this, it was hard, because I was like, this wainscoting isn't all of your building. You know, this, this plastic laminate is all of your building. Um, I think when, and we could have just done a board that showed one of that, all of them, but I wanted to show the relationships to your space. So this looks like there's a lot, but actually, it's pared down quite a bit. You have one wainscoting, so we've got our whole building except for the common, and I think you have another, two types, three types. One in your building C, and one in building B. In the comments, you have that one, and then everywhere else you have, uh, I'm reading myself. The, the amber, and then in the buildings, you do have a lighter one, because you have that at our corridor, and you have a display case that we want your art to stay out there to do it. And that's where, that's pretty much it. And then, again, building B has all the same finishes, building A has all the same finishes, and, you know, your, your restrooms all the same.
When the bits do come in, we will get finite offices versus these, and interiors are better worked with, because you can still function and have a school. All of your day's work is the exact same. So we will have a chance to look at that too, right? We really are trying to be strategic, but we're also trying to be, um, careful with the resources, and you know, there's challenges with material. We're relying on our contractor to help guide that process quite a bit, so we'll see what their feedback is. Oftentimes, they learn some pretty interesting things, and they want to get relative to.
It is in the process, or it is in the.
It is in the process, so it is in the contractor's hands. It's a, it's a very elaborate process with the CMTC because they're breaking up into very many smaller bid packages to go out, but. Generally speaking, we're already getting bids back in in about five weeks. And then the process.
Sixty.
So that is for a discrete set of the different set of bid packages, those are more of the larger envelope packages and some of the site packages.
Right. I think we're gonna, they're still going through that stuff and getting it together for us, we'll, we'll find out.
Oh, yeah, I did.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna chase, we're over.
We're over and way over, it's this space.
So my gut, like my. Hit in my stomach belly reaction to the green and the blue, like the baby colors and then that green. Is, I'm really worried about community response on it and I would. I kind of feel like maybe asking your teachers or the students of the high school, people already in that space. Um, might be welcomed.
For which, for where?
The green.
They're reducing the carpet and stuff on the, the video screen, like I just feel like it's such an aged room, it doesn't.
Are you kind of both, both of them?
Yeah, that room in general, the media center.
I think. I guess. Yeah, I I I guess where I'm kind of hesitant is I get for the sample. We came in and.
Well, no, even on the, yeah, the videos.
And even even there, it's more than what you would want. We came in and we laid out and showed the the pattern to everybody so you can see how we install.
So you've already shown it to the staff?
Uh, not the staff, we showed it to. Not this staff, uh, but that's what we, that's what we came in and we showed all the the layouts and the patterns before this thing. Staff, no.
So we just get too many vision.
Yeah, well, and we can certainly follow up, I know color has scale, carpet has pattern and scale. So we can, we can, part of this is to, the whole idea is to get feedback and get areas of concern, right? Which I've noticed is a trend, and then certainly very specific areas that have a higher level of concern that we do want to pay attention to. So we can figure out how to report back and we can bring larger samples. We could potentially bring options. Flooring is kind of what the whole room and space is built off of, so it's really hard to change that, I'm gonna be honest. Um, but we do want to be responsive to your concerns.
And and if, since these are, these are like a standard tile, there is one that goes with each one of those of gray. So you can combine it with it, would be another carpet added to the project, but that will bring, you know, you can do a mix of like eighty gray and twenty of the green. And so then you have less intensity, um, but I think it's worth seeing the actual layout of what that looks like. Um, even the rendering doesn't capture the way that it should, um, you'd have to see it by the manufacturer or when I. When I bring in a large sample, it will show like the layout from back.
Yeah.
And that, and that would, I think, means a lot of, I get your hesitation.
Well, I have a large scale building with some crazy carpet in it, like I understand the industrial part of it and.
Bullying out.
Yeah, I think it would look great in the bowling center. I feel like our community's main concern will be money, we don't want to spend a lot and waste a lot and. If it starts feeling aged early, then they'll be talking about replacing and then we're spending more money. And that would just be my main concern.
But that other one will will take a lot of abuse and wear because it's kind of a model thing. The bottom one is a little more organized. Yeah, that one won't take the same, like in a classroom, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that looks like I'm looking at computer code.
Looking at the rendering.
I actually really like the material and what it looks like right there when I see it in here and visualizing the space, I'm not sure that it will age well.
Yeah, and I, I, and that's always where I kind of get hesitant about renderings is because they. They're limited on how we can show that pattern based upon what we get, put in that. So I really think I would, would want to show you what the back of it. Um, also, if this, this is, um, has a lot of gray in it, so we could also take this one down and just do gray. And so then you have your accent at the top there and then you would have a gray down there and that would give you more of a kindnessness. And if you have your accent green wall, then you're still pulling in that forest. Oh, it relates an issue, that, that, it's an issue, we can address paint, this is the first time I put paint. And it was a hard one to do because this is for the media center because I originally had a light and I felt like it was too passive with myself, so it went darker. If this is still too passive, I'm okay with bringing it down. This is the first time you guys are seeing it and I'm looking for opinions on paint because.
And you had one that was more forest green and some of those things represented what you wanted and those look pretty.
You like a darker one.
Yes.
And that's, that's great, that's information for me to make sure, because I haven't selected accents in in the documents. I put in, we need an accent pink, but I haven't put in a color yet.
So those are the two colors of my pink.
Um, however, do we have one? The reason why this one is is very light is because in the career counseling, we have these as your, um. As your acoustic wall panels. Um, above and then this is a band. I kind of pulled that rendering out.
Wait, yeah, how long have you been there?
One of them a week.
You guys gotta know that Kelly and I are serious DIY networkers, you know, and.
So that's, so your green is not like a big part of it either and. So then you have the white wall all above and then you have these panels above there in your career panel, I mean, that's this color here, not this, not this one. And it's the first, I want to hear your opinion, if you don't like something, like say it now, because you know, you don't want something you don't want in there in the documents.
So I'm, I'm hearing less test out. Well, we'll show up with some options for really great, we're gonna show up with some options and some alternative strategies for the media center carpet.
Yeah, great.
What else are they concerned about, anything else?
I just don't want to go too dark.
Right, and and I agree with that too, to a point too, I just don't want to go to the hospital either.
Yeah, hospitals.
That's my best definite, that's the way I feel about the middle part at least.
This one here?
Although I like parts of it and it would go good with other parts, it's just.
Well, you know, hospitals work very hard to get that.
I know.
And Melody mentioned sophistication, so I think just in general that.
Yeah.
But I think that was something at the outset, that we didn't want it to be like a, like an elementary school, like super colorful.
Yeah, yeah.
The primary colors, I mean, I do think that we really tried to focus on primarily a very neutral palette, warmed up with wood, we made it to grays and blacks. And like a warm accents with wood accents, either laminate or real wood wherever we can and and very selectively using color. The color is always the most challenging.
It is.
So I think we're doing great, honestly. I would expect that we need to come back with a couple, but I think we're doing great.
Yeah, I mean, and honestly, I get the not lining until we feel like a hospital because. And so we can bring this one down and use accents because we do have the color in the carpet, you know, we can go with more of a neutral. So, yeah, great.
And you know, I, you know, I think the baby blue one, I think I know what brought me about it, first thing I wanted to do is paint white clouds on it. And the recent McDonald's play area till right before COVID was completely that color blue and all the McDonald's characters and white clouds were in that whole room. And yes, it was bright, pretty, but it looked like elementary. Yeah, so that's why, yeah, that's why, I wouldn't paint white clouds on it right away.
It might be good to go through a teeny school and focus on the paint colors. Because you'll see a vibrant kind of darker, uh, green, aqua and.
What are you doing, are we going there?
Um, and then, you know, and then you'll see the middle school, which has more of a lighter color like these, that's kind of why we went to it, because it, um, has a more.
So but in both of those schools, their accents in the bathroom are floor to ceiling, uh, one of them has hexagon, so I feel like we're missing the textures. And.
Sorry, what?
Floor to ceiling in the bathroom on the tile, it's all, it's a whole wall instead of half wall. And one of them is like hexagon, so there's materials and textures that aren't showing here that are definitely elsewhere.
So subway tiles, those are gonna be the floor to ceiling. That instead of the hexagon along with the subway like that.
On the mirror wall with this, so same approach, that is a special wall that does get texture, it's really hard to see in the rendering just.
I was telling you about the half wall, you had a half tile wall on the back.
And in the middle school, um, that's more of a background tile also if I recall, it's like a white, like large format, just protecting the wall. Because we really want to keep the focus on that mirror wall with the sink, lots of texture, lots, lots of color. And that is the approach here with those color kind of textured watery tile. Right, so we could also look to bring a little rendering of that so you can see a little bit more how much wall there is on that one, the bathrooms are all a little bit different.
I'm like, but when people walk by, they're looking at the, they're not looking at the mirror, they're looking straight away and they're seeing a half wall, right?
And that's typical, so all of our other schools, elementary have that.
They're not open. You have open concept gender neutral, you know, the.
AL2D and so.
You guys should go in the bathroom unless you go in, but every hallway that you're walking, Plymouth and middle school, your floor wall is an accent showcasing. A texture or something pretty that does something for the school.
Take your vision away from all the doors in the room.
So are you saying because of the general neutrals, because they're open, you would want to see a floor to walls tile?
It's the one thing that's different, is what I'm saying.
And the only thing with that is, I mean, you could do that specifically for the general neutral. Um, but once, I think that's gonna end up competing with your accent wall. Uh, because then you have, you know, it's floor to wall with your accent, your field tile, your wall tile, which is this right now. That actually, if you come and look up, it has a lot of texture and so if that's all the way up and then you have this, you're competing.
So the texture, the color, it's all on the seat, this exterior wall is very black. Right.
Right, but this material is all the way up and normal, like class looking and here it was showing half wall, no window, dark.
Yes, it is darker, we could look to make it more like this where it's brighter, lighter, but half height versus full height is cost, right?
Do we actually have a window in that bathroom? I don't think we do.
Oh, this is Plymouth, yes.
The big, there's a window in Plymouth bathroom?
Yes.
Uh, yes, and the only ones that don't are.
Yeah, because it exists, so this is.
There's not a window at our middle school bathroom.
I want to say there's.
I just say when you walk by, that's when you see that far wall, like I guess.
At least two.
You know, you're missing that, and you can see how they're there.
Right, so that's the typical condition of the middle school. That is the.
Yeah, so these bathrooms, to me, it looks like a tunnel.
They're darker and that's because we can't get that window at the end and that does make a huge difference.
Can we get like renderings, like the, the beauty that you're seeing?
I want a soccer player on the back wall. Then I want a footballer in the next back wall.
So this is you, and this is your accent wall, this is your mirror wall and then you're gonna have this view, I know it looks like a tone, but it's like the camera, it's the camera. It's just the way the computer renders, so you're looking this way. And so what you're seeing, this half wall is literally this wall right here.
Right.
But and then you'll have that.
Our community, we built the middle school and they already felt like it's too small, we have locker rooms that aren't being able to be utilized. The kids do not get to change into their PE clothes and and go out to PE, they don't get to change because it's too small. So they don't get to go in there and so, so that looks like a locker room to me. It looks like our community is gonna go, great, we just spent money on another hole in the wall. Like that's just the anxiety that I feel that our community is gonna have feedback to us going, this isn't what we paid for.
So what are you saying, you want to see like an accent on this wall as well? Or you just want more?
I'd go floor to ceiling or I'd do something pretty on the back wall because they're gonna be walking by and already, yeah, that's what they're looking at when they're walking by.
Okay.
And it takes your attention then, like I said, away from all the doors in the room and I say, you're seeing that soccer player drawn on the back wall, the football guy, the, you know, baseball player, the golfer.
Yeah, you're black and white sports thing.
Yeah, something on that back wall.
And it is tight, I mean, there's, you know, repeat, you know, if you open the door all the way to six feet of a corridor. And yes, it's not like huge, but like. Have so much space, with so much money, you know, that's, that's the drawback is we originally, when they drew this, we thought double sided scenes with. No, and then we kind of had to move it.
So I'm just hoping that we can make it look prettier as with the texture, so it doesn't look like a dark tunnel and they.
On the far end, you'll get a lot of natural light coming in from the, because that whole wall on the cafeteria is glass up to twenty or fourteen feet. And then so that's gonna, you can kind of see that little light spot on the back there, that's gonna actually bring in tons of natural light reflection in there. Yeah, I think it'll be pretty nice.
And while people are eating, they come up down the tunnel.
Uh, well, they have to come around the corner, but yeah, yeah, so it's a hallway, it's an exception, we want it to be open so people aren't afraid to go in.
I think too, the thing is, well, we're considering cost, like we put that there so that it kind of matches and flows with the rest of it. But this is a wall that if we have to save money, like you're gonna take it down to the six inch base and paint. Yeah, you know, so I mean, you can, that's just.
That height, interior on the bathrooms, are they tiled with that height?
Yeah, there, yeah, with that height, I don't have anyone to listen to. That. That's, that's an expense.
So this, I think shows along with the other comment about not wanting to make it too dark, right? So I've stated about that with a.
And dark, and dark makes it seem longer to see anyway.
Too, right, so if we go with a lighter restroom floor and we do everything we can to have that back wall as light as possible and have it be, whatever is on there, have it be pouring. Right, and make it, you know, if we can do something that's a focal point, great, um, it kind of comes down to cost of design.
At least in your community areas, you have your comments and the, you know, gym space.
I I do think that if you want to go, because this is honestly, this condition really just, it exists with a general neutral, that's what I'll bet, right? Maybe going, if you want to go to the ceiling with those, then maybe we go with a lighter tile, this one instead, this is the one in the documents, this is the one I have here, but this is a lighter one. And and you could go. You, it's still, your accents are still gonna pop, so we can go with this lighter one. I still would go with probably one of these two florings, um, because of darker and when you talk about route lines and. You know, stuff over time, it's a little bit darker. And so then with the lighter tile, you're gonna have less of that tone feel, but I mean. It's also the feeling of being in that view of a, of a.
Right, just as, just an idea, um, what if, just even a simply as had one row of a tile of a color and just. And even another line going across, so it just adds some color to the room and it does still make it a focal, but it doesn't make it be that all dark at the end. It's just got a row and a row or something, you know, add just some color or something, yeah. And still doing the tile. You gotta buy one box by itself.
Or the high school, so they're gonna have like over so and so on this, you know, and there will be kind of things, because it is part of a hallway. You know, and so there will be some color in there, wow, look, uh, grab right now, it will.
I'm sturdy here those times.
Go to McBride.
They're great.
It's the one.
They're sturdy, yeah.
They're sturdy and these are, uh. They're like a ceramic and they, they, they're not the same, you know what I mean? Like there's variations of color, so when you lay them up, they have a kind of like low color.
Because the gray one looks a little bit thicker, but then the white one, you have that a little bit of those, looks really thin.
So when you put them, yeah, it kind of has a little formation, I mean, they're, they're the same, but we'll see it.
Weight variation.
Yeah, you're gonna see a weight variation in the tile and I mean, you can kind of see it here, this is all the aqua tile, but these are like colors within the aqua. So then we do a nice layup on the wall and I wish my tile presentation, when I first showed these. And I wish my child presentation, when I first showed these, then, then you would see how that has a lot of color. These are bright, so I think you're gonna have a lot more color than what you're thinking. It's gonna be a lot brighter than what you think for that space. Um, we can go to the ceiling and see what, see what it does, but it's honestly, those are really areas where I was thinking that guys sleep off on the knee. Like that's, there's no need for tile on there except for aesthetics.
Or then, yeah, maybe keep it to the ground and not split the rub.
Yeah. And we don't have to split it. We can do one floor tile.
I did bring up a height of toilet. Since these are in our community spaces too, where we, the builder or the contractor was checking out that, but I was gonna bring up a view so that it makes sure that happens, but we might want in certain bathrooms, some smaller height toilets.
Okay, and I apologize.
Just being a children's.
So in the preschool area, for sure, we're looking to do like the.
Elementary store.
Child, so even lower down than elementary. Actually typically with elementary, we still do standard ABN heights, um, because it's a couple.
Yeah.
Um, so we don't, I think, have that current product out in any of the public spaces that the high school students or that the high school public community would use. They are in the preschool. Is that enough or is that?
That's funny, me. I just had brought it up with him and he wasn't sure, so.
So we talked about it in the last construction meeting on Tuesday and doing a final confirmation at the end of your office as we speak. Just to make sure, every report back to exactly these thoughts.
That could be a cute design. He's put the line for sure, people on the first door. And then when you walk in, you just know that you go to whatever door is your height and that's the one you'll have. It'll give a little design.
It is a thing, twenty seven inch toilets are right now.
So I just wanna make sure everybody's got a chance to provide the feedback that they want and need with anything they have concerns with. Um, like I said, this is close to the finish line. A lot of the stuff we're, we're committed to, but there are options. When we talk about making some changes to the carpet, you know, that's probably the, the most impactful, honestly, but I still think that there's time to do that.
Just, just. Just to be willing to add drugs to the white one.
Yeah.
Make it a little just different.
And often when you, your floor tile.
But I like the idea, definitely that's great. And thank you for all the compliments, I'm.
Nobody yell, we're just like, oh no.
Color is the hardest part of all of it.
I like the mess, so.
Actually, so then there was, you talked about our own size auditorium, the wood. But you guys were gonna see that, are you not? You've seen that now?
I, we actually got direction from the district to speak that we wanted to swap that out, which is more. Um, it's hard to, we actually just wanna review the rest of those spots.
In the corridor.
That what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Outside the auditorium, outside the entry to the auditorium.
Yeah.
Once they got soundless, it's pretty.
I'm sound, sound. It didn't fare well.
By the way, did all the bricks dip right away?
It didn't always spare, it all worked itself. I mean, in a corridor, the birds will slaps or probably not.
Lots of wood around here.
Your turn.
It's been mid century, we did that kind of deal with that. Easy, I'm sorry.
Took a lot of your time.
No, you didn't. I took a lot of yours. Just be glad we didn't start a meeting just like thirteen minutes ago. You can get home before dark.
We can't.
All right, six point O, this is a board. Yeah, I think upcoming meeting input, uh, rigor borne means six thirty, May fourth fifth. So let's make sure our society. We're safe with it.
And then, and then about you guys, I, I wanted to ask Kristi, because this is our crazy time of year. If she could put us a whole calendar, start from next week all the way through the very last day of school. That's got everything from the middle school's graduation to Plymouth's graduation, the bunch of meetings to you name it in a row, so I. Yeah, because I have one that'll say that this is the middle school's one and then another one saying Plymouth's. I'm gonna, yeah.
Well, or we send the note back to the preschool, because for a while, they, it's always.
So are we adjourned? Are we adjourned?